Good afternoon. Today is June twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. It's the last school committee meeting of the school year. I'm Mark Terry. I'm gonna chair today's meeting as our chairperson Lori Tosti is unavailable. We always start our meetings by reading the vision statement of the Ashland Public Schools. The Ashland Public Schools will be a model district that embraces the academic and social emotional growth of all students through a supportive, collaborative, and challenging experience. Our students will develop into lifelong learners who will contribute positively to society. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Opening procedures. We'll just review the agenda quickly. First, we're gonna do recognitions and student presentations and learn who our new student advisory council member will be. Then we'll move to a public comment and items of interest to the public. We're gonna look to take the discussion vote about the charter school resolution out of order. Do that first if everybody's agreeable to that. Then we'll move on to the presentation of school site councils and school improvement plans from the middle school, Mindez, Warren, and Pittaway schools. You got it? Alright. We'll have a discussion vote on nutrition services contract for the period of two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and nineteen. We will have a discussion vote regarding the appointment to the Warren Principal Search Committee and a discussion vote about a FY seventeen budget transfer. We'll then move on to administrative items, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report. We will have a discussion about a potential new earth club at the high school. And we have two policy updates. One is regarding the town of Ashland field use policy. And then we'll have a second reading on the wellness policy. After that, we'll wrap up with consent actions, which are the approval of minutes from June eighteenth and June twenty- I'm sorry, June thirteenth, and acceptance of gifts, and then last committee reports and activities, including discussion of our summer retreat topics. Does anybody have anything they want to add to the agenda?
Do we have to take a motion or anything to move that or just to consent?
Yeah, well, it's under the same item. Why don't we have, if I can have a motion to move the subject of the charter school resolution to be the first item under the heading of Items of Interest to the Public? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for nothing. We will do that. Alright, so let's move first to the recognition and student presentation, student advisory council.
I'd like to invite Mr. Whitser up to introduce our new council.
So we held elections two weeks ago at the high school for the new school committee advisory council. Two of the members couldn't be here today, but we have Amelia Fonseca, we have Nicole Abatini, and Caitlin Kevany here. And also Alicia Ramones will be continuing, and Sydney Jablonsky will be joining us as well. And Amelia was also elected as, from the group, as the student rep who's gonna actually serve on the school committee starting in the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have some, you can come right up to the microphone, Amelia.
Okay.
Get used to it.
Okay, so in the past two and a half months at the high school, we've, there's been a Make-A-Wish car wash fundraiser. There was Make-A-Wish flocking, a senior barbecue, an art show. The chorus visited and assisted living home and gave a concert. The seniors did community service around the town. The seniors went to visit the other schools at class day. There was class day. The class of two thousand and sixteen, with the rest of their funds, donated flowers and money for a new playground. And there were finals and junior prom. This year, baseball and tennis made it to tournament, band and chorus concert, both band and chorus had a concert. Graduation, senior week, much better pizza in the cafeteria. MCAS, freshman dance, sophomore ring dance where they all got their class rings, and freshmen had a fundraiser at Dairy Queen.
For the end of the year, yearbooks were handed out, and Mr. Ashland happened. I know we talked about it before, but Miles won, so. You got Smiles, he won. And there were a lot of elections, elections for class officers, elections for new STUCO boards. So that would be President Nick Featherston, Vice President Quesi Sechi, Secretary Claire Cushman, and Treasurer Alicia Ramones. And there was elections for new NHS boards, so I was very happy to be elected president. And Vice President is Chrissy Tosti, Secretary Elizabeth Gleason, Treasurer Annie Spielberg, and Community Service Coordinator Olivia Francisonskak. And Class Day happened. We had eighth grade orientation night, so everyone set up tables to kind of show the eighth graders what's going on at the school. We had AP exams. There were award night for seniors and also an awards night for band and chorus.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Busy end of the year, huh?
Yes.
What makes the pizza better?
It's gotta be the slawest, really.
I think they are using like real dough, I believe, or it was just frozen. The dough is much better.
How about the dough?
Thank you.
Thank you ladies. Have a, have a good summer.
Yes.
We'll see you in the fall.
We invite our new rep to sit up here.
Actually, I told Amelia she could go home today. It's the end of, end of, you know, end of school. I want her to get a break. I know, stuff.
You're getting soft here.
I'm getting soft, but. I'll send you an email with the dates for the fall.
So next we'll move to a public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the list of items of interest to the public. And as we indicated before, we'll take one item out of order, and that is the charter school resolution.
I'd like to invite Michelle Smith up, up to the podium. Just to give a brief description, as you know, charter schools, we've had this conversation throughout the discussion of the budget season and in years past, how charter schools impact the Ashland Public Schools in terms of the exorbitant cost to our, our community. And there's been a resolution, which I'll let Michelle speak to, that has been passed around through many districts, through MTA, MAS, et cetera.
Hi, so the Massachusetts Teachers Association has drafted this resolution, really kind of as a template, and asked that local presidents approach their school committees to stand with us to speak out against the expansion of charter schools in Massachusetts. Currently, there is four hundred million dollars a year leaving, taxpayer dollars, leaving districts and going to charter schools. Some districts impacted more than others, but as you know, here in Ashland, a large portion of what we asked for, we're seeking in the override comes from all that we are losing to charter schools every year. So the resolution you have before you, there are fifty, I think it's up to fifty right now, other school committees in the state that have, have already signed this to try to put a stop to, basically pulling the rug out from under districts by siphoning all that money to the charter schools. That's, the towns have no input in, there's sixty percent of the, the current charter schools have no parents on their Board of Trustees having any say in where that taxpayer money is spent. So I'm asking you to consider this resolution, or some, some variation of it that you, that you draft, to stand with the other fifty school committees who are supporting this push to stop the expansion.
Thanks, Michelle. Anybody have questions, comments?
As, as I read it, one of the things that I, you know, also, to me, it's not just the expansion of it, but it's also the drying up of the reimbursement from the state is, is key. It's pretty much all but nonexistent now. We're getting, you know, under a hundred thousand dollars the last two years, right? So where it used to be even two years ago was two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So, so I think that's an important component of this. It's, it's not just lifting the cap, but it's lifting the cap without funding, right? For, for that potential impact.
So, so Mr. Kendra, would you suggest that we add some language into this resolution that would speak to that?
Yeah, it talks about the, the monies there.
Yeah.
And, and maybe adding it there, but I, I think that's a significant component of it, right? If, if it was, if it was simply giving the, the families an option, a different option, because maybe for some families that they're, they're making it for, for the right reasons and, and things like that, but it's, the impact to us is, is, is a, a large financial impact, and, and it's really that. It's, it's kind of like the unfunded mandates. It's, it's, yeah, this is, this is, this is opened up by the state and the impacts are felt and absorbed locally to a larger, larger extent now than they ever have been. If you graph, graph the percentage of that tuition that state aid has reimbursed, it's a step function down every three years. It makes, it's taken a huge dip in the percentage of that tuition down, and it's, it's gone down now to next to nothing. Last year, I think it was, what, seventy-five thousand dollars? So from two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Paul, so what if, in the second line, there's a dash and it says a loss of funds? What if you did a loss of funds in part due to a declining reimbursement, and then continue the rest of the sentence?
That's exactly what I wrote.
Yeah. Just, just something that highlights that, I think, is, is appropriate, because again, it's not, not that charter schools are necessarily, necessarily bad. It's the impact they're having on us, and the impact is really due to, you know, it's, it's all great to have, families have options, but but it's, you know, it's a big deal. Right, you know, and, and maybe, maybe many of them don't even understand the financial impact that they're causing their towns, so highlighting that, I think, is important.
And I would agree, Paul. I think, I, I don't see charter schools in, in the concept of opportunity to try different things and different approaches as being bad. I think it's the funding mechanism that's problematic. And, and Michelle, I don't know if you can speak to this, but is that really the MTA's concern that it's taking resources away from the public school system? Charters are publics, but, but like Ashland Public.
As we know.
Right. Or, or is there an opposition to charters conceptually regardless of the funding?
Well, there's certainly concerns beyond the financial. While that is the, the biggest hit to, to districts is, is the financial impact. You know, some of, some of the other details about how the, the charter schools are being operated are of concern to, to the MTA in, in terms of the, the profession in general. You know, many of them, they aren't hiring certified teachers. That's, that's not a, a requirement. And it's not all of them are necessarily be, even though they might be advertising that it's a, a place of innovative teaching, they're once, if you really go and look in the classroom, it's, it's a lot of just rote test prep. So it's, they're not really living up to what they're advertising. And then on top of that, they don't service nearly the, the proportion of challenging students in, in many ways, as, as the public schools do. So they, they tend to kind of filter out the students that they're willing to accept through various methods so that the public district, the public schools are left with the more challenging students, and then that sort of brings down their apparent growth. That, you know, you know what I'm saying?
They're not absorbing, because those, those students you mentioned come with costs, right? Whether it be special education or whatever costs that are associated with them. And so it's disproportionately burdening us in that way as well. We're, we're, we're getting a disproportionate amount of that. It's not, the, the same proportions aren't being represented properly in, in the charter schools, you're saying, right?
Right.
So when I, when I looked at this, I was most concerned about the funding mechanism, because I, I don't personally want to get into sort of the question of are charter schools good or bad. I think Michelle raised a number of really good points that sort of bring the charter school system into question and some of the things that they do. But before we, I guess before we decide whether to vote on this or some amended version of this, I want to see, again, I'll defer to you, Michelle, and Jim and I were talking about it before. Is there a time sensitivity to this, given what's going on up at the, at the State House now? And it seems that there's not gonna be any activity before the ballot question in November. And, and the reason I'm asking a question, just to be clear, is if we have time to monkey around with this and make sure it really hits the court with everything that we're really concerned about, I don't want to rush through kind of wordsmithing here to pass something that we're not entirely comfortable with, if there's no need to move that quickly.
Especially if Lori's not here as well, so.
Right.
Give her the opportunity.
I think the main concern is, is trying to educate the public and, and having the people who are most impacted by it speak up and against it prior to when it goes before the voting public.
So maybe in November at our retreat, we have an opportunity in August, in November, I'm saying the election. In August, it would give us plenty of time to get that word out there before the November election. Because we now know that it is going to go to ballot, because of what happened this week in the Senate.
So do you need a motion to defer?
No, we can just not act on it, but I want to make sure people are comfortable just letting it go to August. And it sounds like that's gonna work fine, just in terms of the MTA.
I think so, yeah.
Great.
So just consensus that we're okay leaving it to August?
Yeah, and, and if I could ask, if, if there is supporting materials for the points you've, you've raised and things like that, that you can send us, that would be, you know, I think that'd be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Because there might be other components of that that, you know, we, we might feel very passionately about that we'd want to add or modify as well.
Certainly.
So thank you. And, and since I know you're probably going to some end-of-year teacher celebration, no, the smile on your face is no, you're just going home. Just to extend our, I think I could say this safely, extend our collective thanks for all the work that everybody's done through this year and made it another successful year for the Ashland Public Schools.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, next on the agenda is the presentation of the site council school improvement plans, in particular order that folks are needing to come up in.
If they want to race to it, go right ahead. Who's up? Who wants to jump?
Don't all jump at once.
They pre-determined.
Oh, they, they, yeah. They've got, they've got a couple of things going on.
Mr. Djaralba.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So to present, we did a lot of great work in our site council this year, doing a couple of different things. Setting our goals for improvement plan first and foremost. The three goals that we're focusing on are closing, the first, first goal is closing the achievement gaps of students who reach state, district, and individual learning goals. The second goal will support students, faculty, and parents to develop strategies and tools necessary to maintain a physical and mental well-being. The third goal will open lines of communication through partnerships with parents, businesses, and the entire Ashland community. We aligned our school goals as we've done with the district goals. And for our first goal, the closing of achievement gaps, the focus is pretty similar to our goals from last year. In terms of those groupings, those student groups, we really wanted to focus so that our students with special needs, special education students, ELL students would, they would be achieving the same amount of growth and growing with the rest of our population. We set goals of high growth for the entire building in both math and ELA. So for each grade in each subject area, math and ELA, that we want to score above sixty percent growth, which the DESC site says, that's high growth. Or another way of saying it was, is that our students at the middle school each year would be achieving more than a year's worth of growth in a year. So if we reach that goal each year, that we know we're gonna be closing those gaps, not just for those subgroups, but also all students in our building. So that's been our focus. It's a two-pronged approach, because we look at identifying any gaps within our curriculum or areas in terms of our standards that we need to improve upon, so that we're bettering our service delivery and relates to, relating to the curriculum. But also servicing individual students and identifying what each individual student needs within grades and within teams, and assuring that those students are successful, setting goals for those students, monitoring throughout the course of the year, so that they can reach those goals. And you could see some of our indicators of success, so we're doing things such as analyzing our curriculum during professional development, development time. We are creating ISSPs, Student Success Plans, for individual students and monitoring their progress along the course of the year. Using the RTI model to present tiered intervention to students and setting goals in, in that area as well. So you have the narrative and some of our successes in that first area. We're proud this past year that we reached that goal. Over sixty percent for both English and math for all grades. We just had one, one grade, one area that did not reach the sixty percent, which was at fifty-five percent. But overall, we reached that sixty percent average for all grades, which we're very proud of, and we want to continue that success and continue to improve in that area. The second goal, the physical and mental well-being. The idea there was supporting things aligned with the district, such as the Family Reconnect weekends. We continue to do presentations for parents in the community. We did cyberbullying this year. Professional development for staff. We had several staff trainings targeted at mental health, so we had three separate trainings in, in that area. And this year, it ties in with both goals, but we also tried something called, we called them R and R weekends, R and R afternoons, excuse me, where we invited members of the community to come into the middle school, along with our teachers, to present sessions or experiences that were under the umbrella of mental health, whether it be rest, relaxation, whether it be mindfulness, so students had those experiences. So the benefit there was they were learning different skills and strategies to rest, relax, deal with stress, rest management, emotional management, have some fun, and also have some access to businesses and members of the community that they wouldn't normally have. So we had students participate in things, in sessions, that if it wasn't for this experience, they might not have had those opportunities. So I thought that was really exciting, and that went ver- very, very well. And our third goal is to target to target, again, to continue to open lines of communication and improve communication. Uh, I would say our great success this year would be the launching of iParent. So it was our first year at the middle school. Uh, and with some tech, minus some technological glitches, it went extremely well. We opened windows throughout the course of the year. Parents, like the high school, have, have for the last couple of years, could see all assignments, grades, um, throughout that period of time. So that was, uh, that was, that was quite successful. I also mentioned in there as well, uh, I continue to get feedback from the community, from the Ashland Middle School community as to how the middle school can be more effective at communicating with, with families. Um, I just sent that, that survey out about a week and a half ago and looked at those results. And again, I'm proud to say that each year, we're improving. Parents are more and more satisfied with the type of communication that's coming from the middle school. But we had some great feedback points, which I'll target and set those goals. I just got those now, but we'll set those goals for next year and continue to improve upon that. So, and, and then the R and R afternoons, I think, fall under this as well. We do some things to engage the community, like our, uh, our Veterans Day Assembly in November, which involves the entire school. And, uh, but also we wanted more ways for the community to, to come into the school, to have students to benefit from the experiences and the knowledge of people within this community. And I cite the R and R afternoons because our Site Council spent a lot of time engaging those members, setting up those, those experiences for students, coordinating everything, getting the materials they needed. And, uh, we had a really, a, a successful two days. Students, it was a huge, hugely positive experience for students. And, uh, so we're really proud of that. So th- those are our three major goals. We have some new goals as compared to, to last year. Um, we're looking to do new things each year. And, um, this is what is going to, without a doubt, keep us moving forward in those three areas. So we're, we're excited about it. I want to thank my Site Council. Again, there was a lot of work in addition to the improvement plan. We did a lot of hands-on preparation for our, our and our weekends and some of the other data collection, some of the other things that we did over the course of the year. So we're real proud of that.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Any questions, comments?
No, I think it looks great.
I have one.
Yep.
Someone else will ask, but I will. Uh, Dave, just explain a little bit about, uh, how the Title I math teacher fit into this this year. I think that's important. And we're, we've expanded that role to be a full-time position next year under Title I, so.
So, uh, I had proposed this within the budget too, to add a math teacher, and I was excited to get, it was a point five Title I teacher. So with the point five in our schedule, we targeted primarily our grade six students because that was the largest, the largest group in terms of need, looking at data. So our Title I teacher, um, beginning with sixth grade, had that caseload of students that we identified through benchmark assessments, standardized testing, um, and put them in with uh, the teacher for every day. And, um, we, we tracked that data over the course of just this year. It's the first time having this teacher. And it was, we don't have our standardized test scores yet, but huge response in terms of growth of these students. If you look at the benchmark data, the common assessments that they're taking, aligning with, um, aligning with, um, the curriculum. So we're really excited. Uh, he, he really delivered services. Those students will be able to be pulled out, get enrichment and opportunities outside of the classroom. And it was really exciting. He, the teacher did have an access to maybe four or five eighth grade students. They, really with the point five, there was only, within the schedule, it, it was limited. And there was only so much we could do. But the students that he did have access to, uh, data is showing that we're seeing, we're seeing positive results. And it's, it's really exciting. And that was one of the interventions that, that I had from that, our, our first goal, was we were struggling to find a way for those students who just, they, they, they weren't keeping pace with other students. And with our RTI and some of the remediation they were getting during the school day and after school, it wasn't enough. And we needed, uh, I was, we were very fortunate to have that position added because we found a way that during the school day to get, again, additional remediation even beyond what those other students are getting. And they needed it. So it was a great way to service those students. And, um, that's certainly aligned with our first goal. And I'm excited to, to see the PARC scores from, for those students. You know, having it for the first year, just to see where, where they landed. And, you know, we'll continue to expand that. And we're excited that with that position, um, expanding, we can also access other grades as well.
Dave, how many kids? How many kids did that point five Title I teacher?
Total, it was twenty, twenty-three students. It varied. It'd be, it was more challenging outside of sixth grade because they had to drop a special and, and it got a little more challenging with their schedule. But with sixth grade students, the target was fifteen students. Um, in total, it was twenty-three students. I think it started with more like twenty-five, but there was a couple of students along the way who, who dropped. But, um, that was, that was significant. It was really significant. Because if you look at the, those, those fifteen students, in terms of their scores, they needed that support, so.
Great.
Yep.
Anything else, Chris?
That's great.
Thank you. Yep.
So does that mean, um,
Reverse order?
I know, I thought we were going to go from youngest to oldest.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. So I am presenting the school improvement plan for the Minnesite Council. And, uh, we had five goals, although I think that eventually we're going to try to combine, um, a couple of things here. But our first goal was for writing fluency, to grow strong writers. Um, again, we are also aligned with the district plan. And we currently have been working on, uh, formalizing and, and organizing a list of mentor texts to be used by classroom teachers. We've had our literacy specialist, specialist, um, provide some professional development. We are developing gr- grade level rubrics that is complete for the fifth grade and the third and fourth are in process. And, um, all three grades did use rubrics from the PARC, uh, tests this year. We are using assessment data from both our tiered blocks and standardized testing as well. Uh, you'll note that there are some artifacts to support some of what we've done. Um, the mentor text is all in Google Doc. The, one of the artifacts I ended up using for, um, uh, standardized testing was the access test. And you'll note that we had, um, a lot of improvement. Our students did very well, um, on the access test. Um, we're actually releasing, um, many students. We, there's quite a few coming up from Warren School, um, ELL students. Um, the access test, sorry, is, um, for our ELL students. So we have many students coming up from Warren School. Uh, we're also releasing, we have had also six new enrollments in the past couple of weeks um, for our ELL students who will need those services. Um, overall, looks like it might end up being a wash. Not quite sure yet, but uh, there, this, it's actually early in the summer, so I should be careful what I say. But we've seen, you know, we were really, really pleased with those results. I just want to, um, reiterate that because we've been working really hard. The, the growth that we've seen in our ELL population the last few years has been tremendous. Um, and we've added some staffing and tried a couple of different approaches and strategies to try to service these kids who, you know, are really variant in their skill level in, uh, the English language. So, uh, we're going to, we've, going to make some further adjustments for next year. But we were pleased with those, uh, results. We, we'd like to see those, you know, translate onto PARC. You know, I'm not sure. I'm interested to see if that's going to be the case. I'm not sure it will. And it, it is interesting because, and I actually had this conversation with somebody at, uh, the Department of Education in that we, our students, access tells us one thing about our students. And then they go and they take PARC, and it tells us something completely different. And, and so in some way, shape, or form, there's a disconnect there. And that needs to be, so they suggested I write to, uh, one of the commissioners. So I'd probably do that at some point. All right, um. Our students are using, uh, writing notebooks. And actually, some of the teachers in their evaluations, um, presented those as evidence. And there were, it was really powerful to see, um, that a student's work at the beginning of the year and a student's work at the end of the year. So, um, rewarding for students as well. All right. Um, we're currently, many teachers, just the narrative, are using the Six Straits Writing Program. And I know, um, that in the coming year, with Mr. Kyra taking the reins, that we will be exploring that and other programs that, that might benefit, um, writing. There's a hu- there's a huge push in the Common Core for students to be able to write effectively. And so, uh, we're, we're looking at that long and hard. All right. Uh, goal number two, to improve all student performance in the areas of reading, math, science, social studies, using classroom informative and summative assessments, Benchmark Assessment System, um, that's what BAS is. Uh, running records, writing exemplars, the MCAS and PARC results, Envisions Math, and RTI interventions. You know, one of the things about, a couple of thi- a couple of things here. Um, the Benchmark Assessment System. Currently, K through five, the Warren School uses a DRA way of, of assessing students in literacy, and we use the Benchmark Assessment System. I think everybody's going to go to the Benchmark Assessment System, which, um, the literacy specialists feel is a, is a much more effective way to assess the students. Um, what we did this year and, and last year as well, is in the beginning of the year, we give everybody an assessment. It's, you know, it's a bit of a challenge to be, um, doing this assessment because it does involve either the classroom teacher or some other personnel to sit with the students and perform the assessment. And, but it's important. And so what we've been doing is we, in the beginning of the year, we assess everyone. Mid-year, we assess students who are not performing at grade level. And end of the year, we pretty much assess everybody, but there might be a few that don't get assessed. Um, again, it's the, the challenge of trying to perform the assessment while we're still providing, um, onga- ongoing instruction. So, but anyway, in any case, so we're, we're also tracking this. We have a, a website, um, that I created for, uh, staff in general. And we have data folders and we have spreadsheet. So everybody enters the, the BASS results for, and you can see where your students started, where they ended. Um, and so we use that for math, we use it for literacy. Those are the only two areas currently that we're using it for. It also drives our, um, RTI block, which we, we started this year. But, you know, we've had a little flavor of it before, but this year, we, um, arranged our schedules so that we could provide the last block of the day, um, focused Tuesday, Wednesdays, Thursdays on providing supports in, uh, math, literacy, and social, emotional learning. The, um, you know, it was, it was, it was okay. Um, it definitely, you know, needs some work. Yeah, I look forward to working with Mr. Kyra on that one. I think that, um, there are some challenges because one of the things with a tiered support block is, is having, um, staff to, to provide small group instruction, target instruction. And sometimes that's a challenge when we really don't have any more staff. Um, some ways to handle it is to try to do your tiered support at different times. But then, if you're using the literacy specialist during a tiered support block, then she's not servicing the other students. So there's, there's definitely some real challenges there. Um, okay, let's see. The, you'll notice too, that the, uh, students, the, the math and visions, now this was the second year with the Envisions Program. And, you know, I think teachers definitely had some comfort level with it this year. Um, it definitely needs to be beefed up in some areas and t- teachers are beginning to do that. Um, but what we did was we gave the, and we did this a little bit last year too. But this year, we gave the end of the year assessment, um, in the math program in September, maybe early October, it might have been a little bit later. And then we did it again in December, and then again in June. And you'll see that those are, those are just averages, the average change. Um, but nonetheless, they were interesting to see. Now, the mid-year one, you know, when we did it, I said, whoa, you know, I'm not sure this is useful. And, and that's one of the important things as we go forward with the data collection. We're really good now. We're pretty good at putting the numbers in the spreadsheet. But, you know, we need to take the next step and really with the analysis of it. Um, and I saw that too in, in some of the evaluations where people would give me evidence of, um, the data collection, but, you know, well, what did it mean to you? Um, and, you know, so, the struggle there, of course, is helping people find the time to do that. So, but, um, so we're, we've done a lot of work with that. Uh, let's see, what else do we have for? Again, in, in writing, um, a lot of the classrooms are using ACE, which is answer, cite, and explain. You know, we're moving with, with Common Core. We're moving away from being able to just regurgitate information and asking students to, um, you know, answer the question, um, or, you know, what's the answer they're asking? What are they asking you? And then being able to cite evidence in the text and then being able to explain it. Well, how does that connect? Here's the evidence. And so really taking it to a higher level. Okay. And, and this year, one of the things we, we started, and I think we'll probably, we're definitely going to continue this next year, is we started, um, with fifth graders, bringing them in and having them just do flashcards um, in every little nook and cranny of the building, just in the few minutes before school really gets going. And so they would sit with, um, younger students and just may basically do flashcards, multiplication. And that was pretty effective. And, um, that came out of our RTI process. So that was good stuff. And you, you know, it's, it's feel-good stuff, too. It's the older kids sheppening the younger kids. It's, it's good stuff. All right. We also had a high school, uh, literacy buddy program where, um, high school students came down uh, two afternoons a week and provided literacy support to students. And, uh, again, it was another feel-good. The high school kids absolutely loved it. We had a little celebration a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, they, they loved it. And the younger kids really enjoyed, um, the opportunity to work with, you know, sort of a big brother, big sister type of atmosphere. Okay. Goal number three, improve student achievement and the quality of instruction through curriculum that is aligned with Common Core standards. You know, this year, the, the, almost I bet eighty, eighty-five percent of our, uh, curriculum meeting time was used to um, start to articulate our curriculum and map it. Um, you know, we've made a great deal of progress, obviously. The math with the Envisions Program is pretty much set to go. Um, in the other, in the ELA, we still have some work to do. Uh, fifth grade is pretty much done. We have some work to do in third and fourth grade, particularly in the area of common assessments and developing those. So that's something we hope to continue to work on. Um, we had, uh, Ilda King, a three-day training. Thank you to Mrs. Silver. We had about ten or twelve teachers from our school that participated. It, it was really, she, she's really great. Uh, she, she works as a consultant for the district in general on, on some students. And, uh, she just really, she gives you stuff that you can go right back in the classroom and use. And, uh, I sat in on a good portion and really thoroughly enjoyed it and found it useful to me to go into a classroom and talk to a teacher about literacy instruction. Uh, there is an increased focus on reading and writing across the curriculum. That's what everybody's talking about, whether you're teaching science or social studies or that. You're really, you know, it's really, again, the writing, the focus. Okay. Again, I just pointed to the, the Minnesite website that as, again, it's just an organizational piece instead of just always sending people links. We can go there and we can, the teachers get evaluation information. Um, it, overall, the goal is it's to get everybody to go there. That's, that's a challenge sometimes. All right. Okay. So the narrative there, um, faculty and staff will continue to work on aligning curricula to the Common Core standards. A particular area in fo- of focus in two thousand seventeen will be the development of Common Core ELA assessments to measure student progress. Uh, we actually too, I'm not sure where I put that. We, um, also purchased a lot of, we worked with, I was on the vertical science team. You know, those vertical teams were invaluable. They really were. Um, we have so little time, even within a school, never mind without a school to sit and just have a conversation about what you're doing. Um, those were just super, I thought. And we, um, so we were, we were able to work with, um, middle school science folks, the high school science folks, and now align our lab reports with, you know, they don't look exactly the same as they look in middle and high school, but they, they're, they build up to it. So, uh, good stuff. We actually were able to purchase some science materials for the new next generation science standards as well. Okay. Goal four, to promote a cohesive, collaborative, supportive, and safe school environment. You know, we really, we, we have a great school there. Um, we do a lot of great things. We have a PBIS program in place. I think we're on probably year four with that now. Uh, what we've, we've decided that we're going to do a little refresher work with the classroom teachers come the fall, um, just to give everybody that little booster that we can all use. Um, but the students definitely respond to it. Um, we spend a lot of time with student lunch groups and do things, uh, you know, special things between the staff and the students. This year, you know, we had a, a challenge. This year, you know, we had a challenge of not having, our school psychologist was on maternity leave and, you know, we were, we had people that were able to fill in and make up, do the testing pieces and then provide some counseling that, that built into people's IEPs. But in terms of the day-to-day things that happen, that are bothering a student, that would come to school with a crisis at home, those things really were left without anybody to deal with them for the most part. So, that was, that was a challenge for us this year and it was met in a lot by, you know, if you went to any, you know, the guidance counselors or my office or Mr. Irvin's office, they were filled with students at lunchtime who just needed to kind of be away or check in several times a day. So, we look forward to have, having, next year, they have hired, our psychologist will be on maternity leave, still extended maternity leave, and we do have someone coming in full time, so we're looking forward to that. We had many PTO events. We had the carnival enrichment programs, KNO, the DQ takeover. We had an art fest evening, really a great night. There's a nice picture of Mr. Adams in the dunk tank being the good sport that he is. Might not ever do it again now that he knows. Mr. Kyra gave me twenty bucks if I dunk him. That was a great night.
Did it for free.
We have these, the book fair, many PE events, you know, today, in the last few days, the fifth graders have a yearbook. I was able to, you know, sign a lot of them and I looked to see what they had written and, you know, most all of them talk about the, the school events, the mud run, the spooky run, the things that you do as a whole school. And we've done in recent years, little surveys and, and that's what makes a community click is, is the thing is when you come together and, so, we've done some nice things. The marathon, the walking Wednesdays. The neighborhood did a steam night, which might be something we might want to work towards doing for the entire school. And what was so great about it is, they actually had projects that the kids and their families did that night. So, instead of coming in as a parent and being an onlooker, see what we've done, they came together and did it together. And that was just a very, very powerful evening, I thought. Science Symposium is an ongoing event, really another great event. Guidance Department teaches social skill lessons, problem solving, accepting differences. You know, I think that, that the accepting differences piece, I, you know, had a couple of experiences this year that were, kind of took me aback. And that's something I think that will, that will, again, whether we talked about choose to be kind model or to work with perhaps the PBIS team on that. All right. Okay. And number, goal number five, well, the narrative. Mendez continues to provide many opportunities for families and community involvement. Next year, we hope to add a special evening for ELL families. We have two part-time ELL teachers making one full position and one full-time person and they have been an awesome team. They are always advocating for their students and isn't that special, they're even talking the other day about some way of almost having a little homeroom type of thing for them. You know, they just are really, they're doing a great job with helping these kids become part of our community and taking it to the next level, helping those families become part of our community. And that truly is the biggest challenge. All right. So, goal number five, to provide a safe, healthy, and caring learning environment for students, faculty, and staff. So, we have the second step curriculum that the guidance department teaches throughout the year. We have some intramural programming. We have a Chico program, check-in, check-out. And this is where we have about thirty staff members who have a student that visits, visits them before school in the morning and then at the end of the school day, just to say, okay, I'm here, I'm focused, ready to start my day, I had a good night, I'm tired, I didn't. And then, they check out at the end of the day. You know, totally volunteers. It's been a program that we've had for several years. It's, it works very well. We had a nice grade-two transition tour. We use hall monitors at times to aid in safe, quiet hallway behavior. We have the PBIS core values and followed by the entire school, we have the posters everywhere, hung everywhere. We use ticket behavior system. Often, there'll be a classroom system of rewards in addition to the school-wide PBIS reward system. And we also have students who have their own individual behavioral systems. We have a buddy bench for recess time. So, some of the Mendez dads put together, one of the guidance councils had read last summer about Buddy Bench and they put together, they bought a bench and put together a nice sign and we all went out and put our handprints on it one day. It was really a massive undertaking to have six hundred, not everybody had to do it, but pretty much everybody did. Put your hand in the paint, whoop, put your hand on the wall. And so, we have our hands forever, prints of our hands forever embedded on the Buddy Bench wall. Students, classrooms hold class meetings regularly and then, we also did a positive, a feedback, a Mendez family survey in the spring and I provided a copy of that for your reading pleasure. The narrative, the school administration monitors all aspects of the Mendez school and its grounds. Space needs, as you well know, continue to be, to plague us and have an impact on the educational programming. Other challenges exist periodically related to the age of the facility where there are sometimes where we've had to take a room out of service for one reason or another while something is corrected. And I, and the space issues are very, very challenging. We, you know, I have to say that we have people knocking on our doors now with the idea of next year rolling around. We have a few changes that we're making and trying to figure out where everybody's going to be and so, that's, that's a huge challenge for us. So, I just tell them, see Mr. Kyra.
Thank you, Claudia. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, that's good.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you, Claudia.
Kyra.
First, I want to, want to say thank you for, for letting us come up here tonight and just to say thank you very much for the last four years at Warren. This is the last time I'll be presenting a Warren Elementary School Site Council Improvement Plan and it sure has been a pleasure to serve that community. I'm looking forward to joining Mrs. Bennett and the Mendez community next year. So, our, our vision for our improvement plan really sort of changed a little bit once we heard the news that I was going to be moving on because I, I wanted the team to try to make some goals that were going to be a little bit more general so the incoming principal will be able to take some real, sort of overarching views and looks and observations about what is happening there by not putting the kind of pressure on that person to make these immediate changes or implement, you know, new visions because these folks want to have the opportunity to make their own stamp on what's going to be happening at the school. But in the same aspect, we did work hard to make sure that the, the goals were aligned with the vision that we've set forth over the past four years and have them based on our, our district vision. Goal one, create a grade-level data assessment team to assist in the determination of intervention strategies in the area of literacy and mathematics. This is actually a continuation of the goal from last year. Unfortunately, we were not able to finish the entire goal. It was, it was a bit lofty, as we had stated, to get that entire practice put in place, but we as a team felt strongly that it was still something that was worth aspiring to. And that, that is with priority number one, equity in student growth and the closing of achievement gaps. Goal two is to determine how the Warren School will incorporate consistent mindfulness practices in our everyday instruction. I think you've heard from the prior two schools about how that's important and Warren really feels strongly about finding our own way to incorporate mindfulness. Mr. Dijaralmo talked about the R and R weekends and Mr. Adams District, why does the family reconnect weekends? At Warren, we want to figure out how our students and teachers and staff can benefit from mindfulness. And one of the first things you'll notice in our, in our course of action is defining mindfulness as a staff at Warren. Also, I feel it's, it's really important to recognize the fact that this, this particular goal, I feel as if really goes towards two of our district improvement priorities. Number two, obviously, the improvement of student, faculty, and staff well-being, but also improvement priority number one, equity in student growth and closing of achievement gaps. When students are ready to learn and when teachers are feeling empowered to be able to be ready to learn because their students are ready to learn, we are going to see students succeed at a higher level. We are going to see students achieve better. So, if, if we are taking the time to, to practice some of these strategies and get students ready, then I, then I believe we will see some, some increased achievement. Goal number three, create a Warren School Parent Liaison Committee to properly communicate and welcome non-English speaking families into our school community. This is a huge goal for the Warren School as well as the entire district, I believe. It was actually a goal of mine as a, as a principal, one that we tried to get going this past year and, and it did not happen the way we wanted it to. So, I felt strongly in the, in the school improvement team spoke, felt strongly that this needed to be put on our actual plan to make sure it happens. We need to make sure that we are reaching out to every member of our community to the best we can. I feel like the Warren community has a great access to what's happening as a whole, but there are different pockets of, of families that do not get the information the right way. We need to make sure that every family has access to the great things that are happening. So, we want to continue to, to do what we're doing with communication, but now improve it by particularly looking to bring in the folks who speak more than one language and have English as a second language especially. And lastly, the goal four is to really take a look at, a good, hard look at the Warren School master schedule. And, and one thing for some reason that was not added to this front page that should be added here, and I can get you a, a copy that has the correct goal, it should say revise the Warren School master schedule to allow for more effective professional collaboration and student well-being. Okay? That's, that's really, that's written on goal four if you look further on, but it didn't make it to that front page for some reason. So, the actual goal again is revise the Warren School master schedule to allow for more effective professional collaboration and student well-being. We, we see a need for our teachers to be able to get together more often, whether it be through a PLC or whether it be through a, a simple five or ten-minute chat to be able to collaborate about an upcoming activity. Those things don't happen enough. And a school as large as Warren, serving over six hundred and twenty students with up to ten classrooms in each grade level with only some part-time specialist staff, it's incredibly difficult to, to find that time for teachers to be able to collaborate. I, I said to our, our folks that I feel as if we may be setting up the outgoing, the incoming principal a little bit for a task that might be unattainable, but at least this is going to force them to have to take a good, strong look at it. And one of the reasons we wanted to add the student well-being is, we'd like to see if there's a way to get some more student movement. Our teachers are fantastic at Warren about incorporating movement into their everyday practices, but our kids need to move more, whether it's an extended recess, an extra recess, an addition of the BOX program, which has been utilized successfully at Mendez, there needs to be something done. And we hope that through this, this improvement plan, that the incoming principal will be able to take a good, hard look at that. Okay? Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody? Had a quiet group today.
Yeah.
Our cycle starts at six o'clock at night.
Mike, I would like to thank you for the four years. As you know, I've, I've had, I have a second grader going to Mendez, so I've, I've seen the fruits of the collective labor there and, and want to thank you for your service there. I look forward to your time at Mendez.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Pat.
Alrighty. Thank you very much for having us visit today. I would like to present our school improvement plan for the Pittaway School for the upcoming school year. And I'd also like to say thank you to the Pittaway Site Council members for their help and support this year, using the new blueprint for continuous improvement. For some of our members, it was the first time using that sort of a document and then trying to come up with goals that would be relevant for our age group and, and our needs. So, we did, I think we did a pretty good job. We came up with four goals. And our first goal was to research and identify professional development opportunities on social and emotional learning at the preschool level. This has been, as you, as you all know, at the forefront of a lot of people's interest and concern on bringing more attention to, to the need for this. And the timing on this for us actually is very fortunate as the Department of DESI and also in conjunction with the EEC have come out with new standards at the preschool level for social and emotional, emotional learning associated with play and learning as well. So, we're hoping to be able to use the information in that document to help us actually identify in terms of what does that look like at the preschool level? And as a staff, how can we get some professional development opportunities for us to further understand that and be able to implement it into our own curriculum? So, I had the good fortune of attending a workshop not too long ago in Worcester and it did in fact touch a little bit upon the presentation of that particular standard. So, I'm hoping I can bring some of that back and share it with our staff as far as reaching this goal. In the first year, we hoped to just more or less kind of research, take a look at the, the guidelines, the standards, and perhaps try some ideas that we take out of there with the full implementation, implementation the following year after that. Our second goal was to research and create a list of enrichment resources for teachers to support students who demonstrate increased interest and ability for advanced skill development. As, just to let you know, at the preschool level, we use as part of our assessment tool, our formative assessment tool is a web program called Teaching Strategies Gold. And on that is a continuum. So, there's always a continuum of learning on there and you can see where a child falls on that continuum. So, depending on whether the child is at the lower end or at the higher end, we want to be able to develop as teachers, resources and additional resources to help support them if they need that extra support, but also if they have any, perhaps a mastered skill or an interest because a lot of how young children learn is really egocentric and it's really what they're interested in, not necessarily what you would like them to learn. So, we want to be able to make sure that.
Does that change Pat when they get older?
Yeah. Sometimes, sometimes not. So, what we want to do as, as, as a staff is to come up with a, a list of resources and also something we could share with our parents as well. Because, you know, you see sometimes you have some children who have a real intuition for perhaps some of those math skills, but then you have someone else who has a real flair for the arts. So, you want to use those interests and help maybe bring them to those non-preferred tasks or skills that they really need to improve on. So, this is what we're hoping to, to do with that. Because you oftentimes, as I note in the narrative, you'll see bursts or spikes and usually that's because it's something like a light bulb goes off and they realize, ooh, I really like doing this particular activity and I really want to do more of it. So, we definitely want to take advantage of those high-interest activities that they like to do. Our third goal is to utilize assessment tasks from our curriculum units and develop rubrics to determine the level of achievement for student outcomes. This is just another step in that continuous work that we do on our curriculum development and improvement, using the Understanding by Design model. We continually go back, take a look at, at each of our units, the contents and so forth. And the piece that is currently missing is looking at those suggested performance tasks and developing those rubrics so each of the teachers can really be, show true fidelity in how they're actually determining their level of expertise or the, the learning outcome as to whether they're at the level where we want them to be as far as proficient. So, we're hoping to, each month during our scheduled staff meetings, is take a look at each of those units and take a look at those tasks and see what we can develop for rubrics for them. And our final goal is to identify and create professional development opportunities for our preschool support staff. In my narrative, I, I notice a couple, I note a couple of things. We're seeing that our student needs are increasing, becoming more challenging, and also becoming more complex. And what we've also found is that as, as normal and what happens is, you have people that stay with you for a few years and then they move on. So, we also have some change in our support staff. So, between the two, we find that there is a need to bring everyone pretty much up to speed. And also, at our, in our building, it's really, everyone catches in and everyone works with all of the children across all of the classrooms. So, it does require. So it does require more, more information, they need more input and information on how to deal with say perhaps maybe some challenging behaviors or how to deal with some children who may present with differing abilities and how to help them be successful across the different portions of their schedule and also within, in the different things in the day that they have to deal with, whether it be in lunch, during library time, outdoor time. So what we'd like to do is focus a little bit more on our support staff next year. We hope to begin this process by doing a survey of our staff. We talked a lot about this as to when to do the survey and because there will be some new hiring going on this summer, it was felt that we should wait until the beginning of the year and also not only get the feedback from our veteran support staff that's returning, but also perhaps some wish list items from the new staff that will be coming in. And, and those are my goals for the coming year. Any questions on any of those?
Pat, I have a question as you were talking about the special needs and, and the growing needs and you know, we've, we've seen the documentation
Sure.
that you and Kathy have put together. Because we're legally obligated to provide services, do you see a point in the future where Pittaway becomes a special services only school because we are not able to have any open spots?
I, I think that would be a very unfortunate way to, to run the program. I, I do believe that yes, there are, students comes in, students come in at all different level, levels of ability and needs. But really, you have to provide them the opportunity to be with their peers. It's not only in the best interest of our students who are the unique leaders, learners, but also it's very important, you know, you talk about developing that social and emotional learning. Our typical, or our children that come to us that have not been identified as having needs, it's important for them also to understand and develop empathy for those other students and, and to be able to provide experiences to those students is by being role models, being peers and someone that will, they can engage with and learn from. I really think you have to really work at making that kind of balanced. We have always strived to keep our ratios. I know that by law, we are allowed to go up to a 50% ratio of typical and unique learner, but we try to stay below that for a reason. We want to provide the, an environment and an opportunity for children to learn that is the most optimum for them.
Okay, so the state does have a limit up to 50% of the students?
Yes.
Okay. So we couldn't, it wouldn't come to us like that, we would be legally obligated to fill all 200, or I think, what is it? How many kids do you have?
Well, it varies, it really varies because it depends on how students enroll or parents enroll their students.
Right.
And also that depends on, on our placements, the needs that they have. Some of them come to us for half-day, some of them come to us for a longer day.
A little more complex.
So it's, it's, it's not, it's unfortunately, it's not like say you have 10 first grades and 10 second grades and you know they're going to go into a class for the whole day. So it really changes. Some of our students come to us and they're not even really ready when they first come to us at three even to have extensive inclusion opportunities. So what we usually do is when they first start with us, is we really try to get an assessment of where they are. And sometimes we start with a minimal amount of inclusion time and then as the year progresses, we will build that up. Ultimately hoping that our goal is by the time they get to kindergarten age, they are experiencing the most optimum amount of inclusion time possible. Hopefully 100% is what we really strive for. And sometimes we get there, but sometimes they do need that extra, that little time to get that extra support in a, in a smaller grouping. And that's, and so really it's, it's, it's very individualized in that way.
Okay.
Thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Before just leaving the subject, I want to, I think extend our, our thanks to all of you, just like we did to Michelle on behalf of the teachers. Another great year has come to a close today and, and want to thank you for all your efforts throughout the year to make it, make it that, another successful year. And congratulations, Mike, on the, the new role over at Mendez. Good luck. On, on our agenda, we do have listed as a part of this discussion, handbooks, adoption. I'm seeing Jim's notes saying no changes
Correct.
to those. Do we need to?
We do not, I think by law, the only one you actually have to approve is the high school handbook. So we usually
By policy, we haven't?
Correct. There's no, right. So we, we bring forward usually if there are changes so that you're aware of them. So at this point, there are no changes. And if, if there are, we will be having that conversation during our administrative retreat in August. So we will then make sure that, that we are in full alignment with new policies that have been updated throughout school year 2015, 16.
Okay, so let's move on to the
Can I just make, just a quick comment? Yes, I've been on the board
Sure.
four years now and I just, I am so pleased with the strengthening and the development of the site, the school site councils, school improvement plans. Just, I've seen it over the last four years, how the consist, consistency of, of, of how they're supposed to be working. So I, you know, just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you. I, I still think we have ways to go
Yeah.
in making sure that everything is truly aligned to, you know, having the opportunity to align it to the blueprint is critical and, and will continue to work towards making sure that all the schools and, and all of our goals are strictly aligned to that because that then in turn helps with your goals because your goals should be in alignment with that as well. So
I can see that
It's getting, it's getting closer.
We're all getting closer
Getting closer.
to pointing all in the same direction
Correct.
the same goal. So it's, it's really nice to see that development.
Thank you.
And thanks again to everybody who participated in one or more of the site councils during the course.
A lot of work.
Very important job and we appreciate all the volunteers that stepped forward for that.
Next item on the agenda is the nutrition services contract. And before we take that up, everybody's got something in their packet that summarizes the changes. This is something that we could go into executive session to talk about if people had concerns about it. We didn't put it on the agenda because we didn't anticipate that, but if people are comfortable with what's on there and there's not much debate, we can sort of talk about it now. I assume we want to get this done. No, it doesn't, it wouldn't, no, no change would be effective for anybody until the fall, right?
So I want to begin.
Right, it's, but people, these folks
No one's working.
They're not working, right. So
I was comfortable with it, reading through it.
Anybody else feel the need to be in executive session and talk about it?
No.
I don't think so. There's only one thing that I had a question about. I don't know that requires executive session. It was just
Take a shot.
Number seven, number, I'm sorry, number six, the temporary reassignment. I wasn't sure, I mean, that's a summary obviously of the change, but it does, I wasn't sure whether that meant somebody could be reassigned to a position that would normally pay more for a duration more than five days and not be compensated for that. Right now, it says that, you know, they, they must, you know, they must be compensated, right, as opposed to that, and, and this puts it at the discretion.
Right.
But, you know, I want to make sure it's not at the other end of the spectrum, right? A, a must be compensated says, you know, they might be, might be unduly compensated and then at the discretion might mean that they don't get the compensation they deserve if they're placed there for two months or something like that.
This language was at the request of the nutrition workers.
Yeah.
So they wanted the must removed.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And it was, it was a good conversation because they did have that language in their must be paid. And then it's, the, the nutrition manager was pretty adamant about all, and I loved their process. They actually brought all of their nutrition workers together to have a conversation about the contract. And they presented their ideas to us, which I thought was really a neat way of approaching it and, and working with them on the language. And they just felt as though they needed to have a little more control over those workers who were getting paid or not getting paid and, and at a different rate, so.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, so if, let's see, marked up as discussion vote, we don't have a draft motion, but we get a motion to approve the July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019 nutritious, nutrition services personnel agreement.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, no oppositions. Next one is the appointment to the Warren Principal Search Committee.
Yes, as you know, we are in the process of looking for a new principal to replace Mr. Kyra at the Warren School. And our interviews will be, we started some last night and we do not have a member yet on the committee. We have a fantastic committee of 13 individuals. We have interviews tomorrow evening and I would like to have a sitting member of this committee on the search committee.
And we have a policy on that too that
It says, i- it's up to the discretion actually of the superintendent and, you know, I, I, we've always asked if someone wants to participate. It's not a requirement. It says may in, in the policy actually, so.
So anybody who's interested?
I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, anybody else? Just, okay.
No hands quick.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion to appoint Paul Kendall to the Warren School Principal Search Committee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You going to abstain or anything, Paul?
I can vote for myself, right?
You can vote for yourself.
Sure you can.
All right.
You should vote for yourself.
And now the next item is the FY 17 budget transfer.
Very short. I just like playing with the switches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it should come up in a second call.
I know you know who I am.
I heard Claudia's voice. So as you'll see in the budget transfer, we're looking to, to move some funds from our out-of-district pending placement to the preschool for, into salaries for a preschool ESP line as well as a teacher line. And I, and I invited Kathy Silva here to explain the reasoning behind this. What we're experiencing, as Pat actually mentioned in her presentation on the school improvement plan, is we're seeing many more students coming into those three-year-olds with really complex needs in, at the preschool level. And as you know, we've talked a lot about ABA services and, and our needs. So I've asked Kathy just to present quickly
I, I agree.
That'll be briefly, yeah. But why we're looking for this transfer and why it's critical that we do this. So turning it over to you, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. We are specifically having difficulty with regard to our youngest students who have the highest level of need and the numbers that we have currently identified for servicing at Pittaway. The ABA program, which is sometimes called Room Nine, sometimes called the Workshop, is where these students receive their most intensive servicing support. It is a classroom that is staffed by an special education teacher with experience with ABA instruction. And typically the students have a one-to-one or two-to-one staffing ratio. In the classroom, they are provided supports that include ABA-based instruction, that can be anything from what's called discrete trial training to floor time to video modeling. They also receive support for inclusion opportunities. And that inclusion opportunities can go both ways in terms of either taking the student into one of the integrated classrooms or bringing a peer model into the ABA classroom. In addition to the special education teacher, we also have ABA paraprofessionals. These are staff who have been trained specifically with regard to ABA service delivery instruction. And as a district, we are trying to head towards having all of our ABA paraprofessionals trained even more so with regard to RBT training, which is one step up in terms of making sure that the quality of their, their training reaches a level that we feel very confident with their capabilities to deliver ABA instruction at a high level with fidelity. Not only is this classroom staff with the teacher and the ABA paraprofessionals, and there are six of the paraprofessionals currently employed, all of our related service providers are working with students as directed by their individual educational plans. So that would include speech, language pathologist, our occupational therapist or our certified occupational therapy aides, and our physical therapist. We also might have unique needs including vision or mobility, depending again on specific student need. So to give you a visual of what the classroom looks like, I took a couple of shots of the classroom recently. You can see the copy areas are actually where the discrete trial training occurs for students. And you can see that it is pretty much a one-to-one instructional model. You can see that there's a little bit of area for, you know, floor time, for snack time and right in the front ground of the picture, you would, you've not seen where there's a center time available to students as well. So I thought I'd give you a little breakdown of the numbers so you would understand why the, today, why I'm standing before you asking for consideration for increasing some staffing patterns at Pittaway. In, I couldn't trace back to 2002 when the program actually started. I could only trace back to the years I've been with the district. So in 2011, we started with four students identified for that classroom and we added four by January. And it's typical that we do add students through the school year because they turn three. And by regulation, we have to start servicing students at their third birthday, although we actually start the assessments at 2.9. So at that point in 2011, we had one teacher and we had, and that teacher happened to be a .6 FTE. And we had five ABA paraprofessionals. However, one of those ABA paraprofessionals actually spent a day at Warren and that rotated. So they had four paras at Pittaway and one of them went up to Warren for the students who were there. So you can see how it's increased so that starting this year, we already know we'll be starting with 15 students identified for the classroom. Currently, our staffing pattern is one teacher who is at a full-time FTE and six ABA paraprofessionals. We can't do it. We will not be able to service these, this number and these students. Each year, we've been asked to be creative and tasked to be creative in how to meet the increasing needs through the school year. And with incredible planning and graciousness on Pat's part with relooking at staff and what staff are doing, every year we're able to continue to offer the correct level of support and intervention for students by moving staff around and looking at schedules and changing up schedules on a pretty consistent basis so that we deliver the right amount of instruction for each student and offer the right amount of support. At 15, starting the school year, there's no way that we can possibly do that. So what I am requesting and think would be appropriate for the staffing is to add one special education teacher full-time as well as three ABA paraprofessionals. That would allow us to break the 15 students that are currently identified into two classrooms and each classroom have one special education teacher with the correct number of ABA paraprofessionals that would be necessary to support them. If we're unable to do this, ultimately, I still, the district is still obligated to provide the entitled services for these students who are identified through their special education teams as eligible for special education services. So I broke down the two alternative ways of meeting that obligation. The first is to pay the tuition of a private preschool placement for the student, which would be approximately 13,000. And then that doesn't count summers typically. And it also may or may not be circuit breaker reimbursable, which is important for consideration. That does not include any of the related service interventions. So that's just the tuition into a preschool program. We would still be obligated to provide the direct services and supports that these students need, which could include ABA paraprofessional support. That could be throughout the entire preschool day. It could be obviously speech and language or OT services as well. Typically, that might be two or three times per week. And each of those services would have to be contracted. I couldn't just ask the staff who are currently employed by Ashland to go to all these various preschools and service these students. So we'd have to get some contracted services and those salary ranges are typically between 75 and 125 dollars per hour. We'd also own the transportation costs. That's one way of doing it. The other way is to find a approved day placement for these preschool students. That is challenging because of their age, but there are a few. Typically, that placement cost would be about 44,000 and that's looking at collaboratives, not at private day. And they typically would include though, those related service supports. So you would get an ABA paraprofessional, you would also get the related services of speech and language or OT included in that tuition cost. But again, the district would also be looking at transportation costs as well. So if I did some real quick math and said to you that about 10 students is our maximum number to do effectively, you're looking at five out-of-district costs immediately starting the school year. So five times 44 is roughly 200,000. And if I did the math the other way in terms of looking at private preschool placement and then the added service and then the added services, you're looking at about the same cost. I actually did do it with calculator in hand and went, yikes, because it is very costly, obviously. These are students who require intensive services and supports. But now I'm going to make a statement, which is with those intensive supports and services, these kids make impressive and remarkable gains. And when Pat talked about how we try very hard to move students to the least restrictive environment possible, we do that because we have a value here in Ashland that I'm very proud about, which is trying to provide meaningful inclusive opportunities for all students. And these kids deserve our strongest effort. Research shows that hitting them hard and young provides the best growth and gain and skill development for them. So, it's money well spent from, you know, if I just break it down that way, the money you spend right now will actually decrease the service needs of these students later, which is, again, kind of being wise in a fiscal way, but more ethically wise in terms of knowing that if you give this level of services now, you are truly helping those students reach a full potential and potentially being able to work away from needing any kind of special education support whatsoever. So, that is it. I promised I'd be brief, but I'm here for questions if anyone has any.
Thanks, Kathy. Anybody have questions before we get into it?
I just have one comment as well. Kathy, we've identified 15 currently.
Correct.
But if you go back and look at the historical average over the last five years, three have come in during that January time period that you presented.
Yes, one of your slides speaks to that.
So let's, you know, we've got, so potentially it could be 18, based on historical, you know, students coming in that we don't know who are turning three yet because parents haven't, or we haven't been identified yet. They move into town or whatever.
And actually, the slide over the last two years has been four and four.
Right, so I was just using the two in there.
He's being optimistic.
But if we get, if we get another three, are we going to need another ABA?
The potential for that, I would not say no or yes at this point in time. Again, each year, quite honestly, I would say that the program by March is kind of saying, oh, we can't do this anymore, we have reached our capacity. And Pat has worked so incredibly hard with me to try to figure out what makes some sense and sometimes we've shifted people around and been able to look more district-wide at levels and see whether we can be creative in that fashion. For instance, when I talked about we sent one ABA para up to Warren that one year, that was because we could do that and it made sense given the service delivery needs. And so that potential is always available to us to be looking at. But yes, as the numbers increase, we do have to look at staffing patterns. But again, you know, my hope is that with what I've currently presented as, you know, making sense for next year, that we'd be able to go through the entire year with that.
So, and just to try to quantify it, I know it's unique to each child, but barring a really high-demanding child, would three or four additional students be able to be accounted for, you think, with what you have or what you've asked for, or?
I think you actually probably expressed it better than I, which is, it's impossible to know whether the kids that are going to be identified this school year are kids that are high needs or not as high needs. Again, kind of tracing historically, the communication abilities of the students that we're currently seeing is far more needful than we had seen at the beginning of the program. When I first came on board, almost all of the kids that were in the classroom were actually verbal. That is not the case now. They're using assistive communication devices, they have higher needs. It could change again. I think that Ashland had been behind a little bit the curve of the increasing recognition of kids on the spectrum and kids coming in with such significant developmental needs. And so, like many of our cohort districts that are also seeing this incredible rise, we're kind of wondering if we're at that peak now and if we'll kind of reach a stability with regard to the identification of students on the autistic spectrum.
So, as I think my fellow committee members know, I need to take off before we're finished with this meeting. I don't want to rush through the discussion that I think needs to happen around this. I've just observed that I think there are two different questions here. One is, you know, whether we're going to support the additions and the second is where are the transfers coming from? Obviously, we have a recommendation. I don't, people may be comfortable with that, but I just want to recognize that there really are two, two parts to the question before us. You know, personally, I think Kathy's made a very compelling case of why this is both in the kid's best interest as well as the most cost-effective way to do it. So I personally would support the proposed transfer. But I'm saying that because I need to move on out the door in a few minutes and want to at least be on record as supporting the request. But I'll leave it to you as to whether people want to have more discussion on it or are ready to move forward with an action. Don't let, anybody else?
I'm fine moving forward.
Yeah, I'm fine moving forward and just to comment on my feelings on it, you know, to me, it's fiscally responsible, but it would have to be dramatically fiscally irresponsible for me to not support trying to keep the kids in district because I, that's one of the things I like about the Learning Center is they're going to be better community members. We can, you know, we're going to treat our kids the best, right? We're going to, they're going to thrive best here, and if we can support them here, we can, we should. And this happens to be fiscally more responsible than sending them out, but even if it was a wash, I think we need to try to keep them in district.
Well said, I agree. All right, so if there is no further discussion, we need a motion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Do we have a motion to transfer funds from the FY seventeen out-of-district pending placements line item in the amount of 1,000, oh, sorry, 146, nice try, right?
Right.
146,486 dollars and FY seventeen preschool ESP line item in the amount of 43,160 for a total of 189,646 dollars to the following accounts. Preschool ABA, 130,001 dollars and preschool teacher, 59,645 dollars for a total of 186,646. On that, I just noticed the totals are off by 3,000.
Yeah, they don't match. Yeah. They're both 189.
They're both 189.
The backup says 189.
On the spreadsheet backup, they're both the same.
Okay, good.
So, the total transferred to those two items would be 189, 646.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Oops.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
All right, thanks, Mark.
So, at this point, I am passing the gavel, if we had one, to, there it is, very formal, to Kathy to carry out the rest of the meeting.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Chair Secretary.
I'm going to be the Chair, Vice Chair Secretary or something? You're going to, you're going to lose me in 15 minutes. Sorry.
So.
We lose our call in 15.
We better get through everything we need to vote on.
Let's move, yeah.
All right.
Everything else is pretty quick, Kathy. No, I, superintendent's reports, these are pretty quick, we'll just get to the policies, that's really where we need to focus for 15 minutes.
Okay. So, as we continue, so do you want to, are we continuing? Wait a second, where are we?
Do you have reports?
I just have one real quick report from the superintendent. I guess that's me, right?
Thank you for coming.
I just wanted, just a real 30-second update. I met with Cici Doucette after her meeting last week with regard to Wi-Fi and looking at hardwiring, potentially running a pilot, actually, in one of our schools where she's looking at some grant funding and we'll have further discussion throughout the summer. And, again, I just wanted to go on record that we're certainly looking at all of the potential impacts that Wi-Fi and, you know, the radiation and all of the things that could impact our students and their well-being. And we are taking this very seriously and Cici and I have met and will continue to meet throughout the summer in thinking about low-cost measures to ensure if we can hardwire some of our devices. So, just a quick update, that's all I wanted you to know and she and I will be meeting again in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thanks. Assistant superintendent?
I do not have anything.
Nothing? Okay. All right, so, we, moving on to discussion and vote of the new Ashland High School Earth Club? Who's presenting, are you presenting that?
Yeah, again, the Earth Club is.
No, I thought we had a club.
Well, we have an environmental club, so this is just another.
The same thing or renaming it?
No, it's a different, different group.
It's different.
Ms. Graham is still running it.
Okay.
They're focused on decreasing our ecological footprint on AHS, educating the AHS community about environmental impact. So, again, as we have to do, we have to create the club so they can potentially, and they've given you some backup in anticipation, if they fundraise, how they'll utilize the funds. And, you know, so, again, it's just the formalization of allowing this group to continue. They're doing good work now, it's just.
Yeah. Ms. Graham's the advisor for the other, for the environmental club, too, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Why not combine the two?
I don't know, I mean, it's a good question. If Kelly was here, she might have a better answer than I do. Different group of kids.
I'm not opposed to it, but I was wondering the same thing.
I'm not opposed to it, but I'd like to hear why it's so different.
Okay.
Like, and, I mean, I know Christine really well, as far as what she's doing, she works with Phil on a lot of things.
Yeah.
And like, I think it's great, but to have two different clubs, like, maybe if you have, sorry.
If you have two different.
And maybe we don't formally have the environmental club, there's a recycling club, there are other groups and maybe this is formalizing it. I mean, again, we can go back and, I can find that out.
We could approve it and then.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't want to hold up things, but I do think, you know, we have it in the town where we get oversaturated with subcommittees that do different things and, you know, but we're also trying to, you know, we want a sense of community, right? So, we want to have little factions that are doing similar things. We want, you know, if these two groups are, why do we need two different groups? If, is it because, hey, this is my group, this is your group, you know, I don't want it to be like that and I don't know that it is, I'm not saying it is, but, you know, aren't we, wouldn't they be able to do more powerful things together? You know, they seem to be, a lot of overlap, but I, you know, I don't know.
Can we pass on this until we hear from Kelly?
What would be the impact of waiting to, you know, vote on that later? Are they doing anything over the summer or?
It doesn't say they are.
Well, I mean, so, I mean, it's really up to the building principal, right, how, how clubs run and stuff. I mean, they could pass along our comments.
The building, the building principal approves it, but for the account, we have to.
You have to approve the account.
To approve the club and the account.
Right, let's go together.
Is it a problem to have these many accounts, Barbara?
You mean student activity counts?
Student activity counts, no.
No. We can pass on it and I can get clarification.
Does it hold them up for the summer, though, for what they might want to do?
No, I don't believe so.
You know.
They're still going to go ahead and do their work, whether.
Whether we have an account or not.
Approve it or not at this point in time and I can find out if she's really consolidating the club. It doesn't say that background, so I certainly can ask that question.
Okay, so, well, what are we doing then, deferring?
Yes.
We'll hold it?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
All right. I'm just writing a note.
And I would like to just take one step back, Ms. Bates, and have Mr. Ann read the, or I can read them while I've got them.
That's down here.
Oh, it's down there already? Okay, we're good, keep moving.
Oh, okay, keep moving.
I was thinking of gifts, but they are there, yep.
Okay. Moving on, we are moving on to policy updates. So, first, do we want to tackle in this order the Town of Ashland field use policy? Or do we want to do the wellness policy?
I say we do the wellness policy first.
You guys good with that? We'll start with the wellness policy. So this is the second reading of the wellness policy. Barbara, so you added, so the one we have, the red is what is added?
The red is what is added, so this red section here is what was on the original policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the difference in that first one is primarily the adding back of the, the composition of the committee, right?
Yep, so I'm just thinking, just, this is more wordsmithing, it seems, just, part of it is repetitive, I thought.
The first two bullets, that was my first comment, is that they need to combine it.
So we just kind of need to maybe fix that?
So I would, yeah, so I would suggest.
The first sentence stays.
Yeah, I would suggest that we strike from where it says enlisting after the first bullet. So in accordance with the federal and state laws and regulations, Ashland Public Schools will establish a wellness advisory committee, period. And then, keep the red, the committee shall include.
Okay, I see what you're saying, sure.
So you're just deleting, consisting of representatives.
Okay, right.
That's the repetitive piece?
That's what I was, yeah, okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I mean, that's how I would strike that.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
You know, but I did notice something that's missing from, the bullet on the old policy, we had the superintendent shall appoint committee members. I was kind of thinking, do you feel we need to add that back in, the superintendent shall appoint?
I mean, one, I have the authority under the Ashland Public Schools to be the one who appoints anyway. I don't think it needs to be.
That's kind of an unwritten thing, okay.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be.
I don't think it needs to be specific.
Doesn't even hear who's the appointee.
Including a designate.
Designate the authority to, you know, to Mr. Vera, who will be taking this committee over, so.
Okay. Good choice. Is it mass law that you have to include members of your Board of Health?
That is in the regulation.
Yeah, yeah. Well, to, well, to the extent possible, right?
To the extent possible.
So they may not, you have to offer that invitation.
We have to offer that invitation, no matter how dysfunctional the board is.
Well, we can't.
I just don't want to bring any drama or whatever into what we're trying to do. All right, so that part, that line is part of the regulations?
Part of the regulations.
All right, so we can't strike it or?
And as it relates to the appointments.
Yep.
There is something further on, the committee functions, where it describes the report and as part of that will be a review of members and membership participation in the previous year and as appropriate, a request to the superintendent for replacement. So it does, it doesn't call it out earlier, but it does talk about it indirectly.
All right, okay. All right, then I guess uncomfortable with that then. Was there anything else?
So, I mean, I mentioned this before, I still don't, the SMART goal, too, I, it sounds like something more of like in the mission statement, I don't know how it's measurable in any way, it's just kind of a repetitive thing of what our, what our overall blueprint and other things are and, you know, to label it a SMART goal, and if we're going to keep it there, I'm fine with that, I just bringing it up as, it's not something, if somebody said, how are you doing against us, that we're going to be able to say in any measurable way, right? There's no way to measure our success on that.
So I'm okay with going one of two ways, we either drop it or we leave it as is and in the fall, that's the first.
Sure.
I don't feel strongly, I just look at it like.
I tried, after reading your comments, I tried, I think it needs to stay, one, partly because it is part of the blueprint, it's part of the school committee goals, and I agree, if we're going to label it as a SMART goal, then we should try to wordsmith it a little bit more to indicate, you know, you know, by the end of, it's difficult when we're looking at this, you know, four times a year we should be meeting to go through this, but by the end of school year 2017, all schools will have participated in four PBIS activities, so that's how you make it a little more measurable and a little more, so I think we can do that, yeah.
Okay, and that's fine, it was more just, hey, I don't want to necessarily drop it, but is it, does it belong in the first, the mission statement paragraph, right?
Why don't we have, it's a placeholder, so then in the fall, the committee could.
I do think it's a goal worthwhile of keeping, but you're right, the committee this year just didn't have the information on exactly what was buttoned down with PBS and what, how would you measure it, so.
How would you measure it? That's fine.
Yeah, I think that would be good, so.
So that'll be the first thing that the new committee works with.
Yeah.
And I noticed the change in the footnotes, which is great, but I don't see the reference to the Hopkinton footnote anymore.
So, under SMART goals, four bold, not number four, but SMART goals, the beginning of it, four is the super set, all of the goals.
All of the goals were taken.
Well, I went to Hopkinton to look at their SMART goals and took some of their language and some of their ideas.
Okay, so that superset, that superscript was referencing that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure of that.
Yeah, when I saw your comments, I went back and looked and said, that's how I interpret the superscript is.
Okay.
I saw that and I'm like, is it, because it's not, you know.
Not the specific one, but all the goals were in alignment.
I have something on the guidelines for other food offered in school and it's the.
This is under the procedural guidelines?
Yeah, next to the last page, page six.
So that's not, this isn't policy, it's procedural guidelines, but go ahead.
Oh.
Yeah, procedure's different than policy.
This is just the policy and then this is all procedure, which is kind of like.
This is just the policy. And then, this is all procedure, which is kind of like handbook, more like for the administrators. This is their procedures. But go ahead, you can.
So, the fourth bullet, as far as use of food in the classroom for infrequent celebrations. So, the first bullet, we say we're not going to have candy and soda at school events because of the minimal nutritional value. But then, the infrequent celebrations, which then happen to be frequent celebrations, especially at the end of school, are corn syrup laden food coloring, icy pops, unless you bring in something else for your kid. And I think those two don't jive. And I think, I mean, I would love to see us be a food dye-free district. I know our nutrition director would love that too. I know it's not probably possible, but I think we need to address the fact that like popsicles get used a ton and they're no more nutritional than candy. Okay. Well, at least the ones we serve. Like, you can get frozen fruit bars that are a combination of sugar and ground up fruit that are at least a little bit more nutritional.
Right. That wouldn't, we, we're not going to put that in policy. So, how do we, that's more of a building procedural thing. So, Jim guidance on that? I mean, can we tell you what, you know, our feelings on that or?
Yeah.
But we wouldn't put it into the policy though, right?
Yeah.
So, in the first bullet, foods such as candy and soda, and how would you word what else you're trying to eliminate?
I guess, well, I just don't see how, if we're saying that we're not serving candy and soda, and some of them, candy and soda had the same sugar content and zero nutritional value as a popsicle.
Right. I understand what you're trying to get to. I'm asking you how to word it.
Well, and, and, and just so, the, I don't see these bullets as related in any way, shape or form either. The, the first one is intentionally trying to talk about things like kids night out that are these extracurricular activities that may be frequent, maybe weekly, but, you know, there's things that somebody, hey, if I'm very active in school, I'm going to be going to these all the time. And, you know, to try to say, hey, listen, it, it's something like caf, you know, cafeteria to say, let's make sure we're promoting on a, on a regular basis, these, these values. And the other one's saying, hey, at the end of the year, yeah, maybe it's a, you know, it's frequent within that week, but it's not frequent as a, as a pattern of healthy behavior that, 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 that's different. So, I, I, I view those as different as far as, one is very much a frequent pattern habit-forming thing. And the other one is, you know, almost intentionally saying, listen, you, you can, you can let loose a little bit. Like, when you're on a, you're, you're on a, you're on a, a very healthy eating diet, doesn't mean you can't partake, you know, frequently indulgent things.
Wait. No, I agree with that. I, my, my counter to that would be is if we're trying to promote good behavior in school, why you'd be giving a kid colors and sugars. And I would also contend that it's not just the end of the year. I mean, it is concentrated to them, but like if the kids are in school nine months out of the year, I would say probably six out of the nine months or seven out of the nine months, they're having at least something once a month where it's some sort of celebratory food or activity, you know.
Not all kids, but maybe.
The younger ones?
No, not necessarily. No, I.
That hasn't been my experience.
No, I, I'm just saying, it, it would not be, I would not, I would not believe it would be school-wide. There might be, you might find an event in one teacher's room in a month, but it would not be school-wide every classroom. So, that infrequency may occur to, in your classroom, but not in mine during that month, right? And then, two months later, maybe I had something and you didn't. That's still infrequent. It'd be frequent if it was your class every single month, to me.
Which I've had that experience.
Which I, right.
Right. But, but then that wouldn't, that, that bull, she would, that classroom wouldn't fall under that bullet.
Right.
It's infrequent. So, if you're doing it every other week in that classroom, that is inappropriate. That, that is a habit-forming, you know, habitual, it's, it's, it's setting a bad precedent, right?
And, and these are conversations that, with the procedural, right? It, it, it falls on the principal's shoulders and the teacher's shoulders to be seeking approval and, you know, with this procedurally. So, we need to be focused on making sure our principals are well aware of the policy and teachers are well aware of the policy and the procedures that go along with the policy. I think that's where we're failing at, more than they are the policy.
Yep.
Just a little consternated there. I, I had an issue with that bullet, but in a different way.
The fourth one, right?
Yeah, that, that it should align better with the, with the, with the policy. And that, they're just saying that you need to, you know, if you have any questions, go to the principal and nurse and as opposed to the other one says you must get approval.
You must get prior.
Right. So, I, I have a recommendation for a change to this.
Okay.
So, we're, it says, and to consult with the principal and school nurse. I would suggest that we change it to, and to consult with the school nurse, because they consult to see what allergies are, are in the room.
Right.
And get preapproval by the principal.
Okay, yeah. So, exactly. As long as it aligns with.
It aligns. So, I'll make that change.
Yeah.
That's all I, I noticed. I, I, I'd sent this to you as well, that, that the two bullets in, uh, uh, seem to be generic in nature that are in the nutritional promotion and emotional wellbeing sections that you say promoting wellness in the school. Would be collaborative effort, cooperative effort between all school staff, parents and students. And it's in two of the sections just as this generic thing, not specific to those areas. And, I mean, that's fine, I guess, but we're reading repetitive and is it a mission statement thing? Or do, or were we looking to put more specific verbiage in those areas? I, I wasn't sure of that one. I did, when I was reading, I just said, didn't I just read that? And I went back up and saw the exact same verbiage in two, two sections, but not all the sections. And just.
Where, where are you pointing to?
So, on page four, under nutrition promotion.
Yep.
The second bullet.
Okay.
And then on page six, the second bullet from the top, it's the same statement.
Okay.
And, and the statement's a great statement and everything, but it, is it more of an all, should it be in everyone and therefore should it be in the mission statement as opposed to, or, or were somebody looking to put more, more detail in those sections regarding that topic?
So, so if you wanted to pull it out and put it in the mission, suggestion I, I would have would be where it says in, in, at the beginning of the, of the mission, where it says the Ashland Public Schools in that, in that third sentence, in collaboration with school staff, parents and students, will strive to educate our students so that they may live full, productive lives rooted in physical. So, we're just taking really that language and putting it in the mission.
Sure.
And, and then you can strike it from those other subcategories.
And I, I, I don't feel strongly either way. I just note, I just noticed it and.
No, but I think that's the intent, is that we should, we want to be educating through parents, through staff and to kids about wellness.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I like, I like that idea, putting it there, in the policy and the, in the mission statement as opposed to in the procedure.
I need to go. So, if you want to vote, if you want to vote on this.
Do you like that, do you like that pulling it out? Alright.
Yeah.
Do you like that?
Yep.
Alright, why don't we do that? Add it to that first paragraph of the policy and take it out of the procedure? Is that what we were saying? Oh, it's your proceed, but it's your procedures.
Well, no, you, you still need to, right.
Alright, okay. So, we move the, okay, so why don't we, can we vote? Do you feel comfortable voting on this?
Yeah, I mean, well, probably.
We'll come back with the policy. Well, the wellness committee meets again in the fall.
Right. Cause it's.
They're going to continue to look at it.
We can talk about it.
Never sentence, don't, I mean, we're always reviewing.
It's better than it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it is.
Continue to fix it.
Okay.
It's fair. You're going to be part of that wellness committee, right?
I've been on it, but we, we'll.
No, I know. In the summer, we'll figure that out.
Alright, we move and put. Policy first paragraph. Okay. So, so we move to accept as amended.
As amended.
Yes, as amended.
Okay.
The, how do we word this?
ADF wellness policy.
Yep. So, I move to accept the ADF wellness policy as amended here today.
As amended, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before you leave, Ms. Williams, can I get two real quick things?
Yeah.
Uh, I, just a, a motion to move the Town of Ashland field policy, use policy to take no action on that today, because we will not have a quorum.
So moved.
So moved.
Good. And then the.
I'm sorry, who was first?
Uh.
First, second, all in favor?
That's fine.
And the last thing would be, before you leave, I, I'd like to get these gifts and donations accepted.
Okay.
Yes.
I think they're important. Anonymous, helping our own fund, forty-five dollars.
Okay.
And AFI has donated twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars to the Warren Literacy Program. It, it's phenomenal. The, they are covering basically, under their new initiatives, the entire cost of purchasing supplies, professional development opportunities for our teaching staff. And it, it's phenomenal. Mike, Kyra and I have, have already reached out to AFI to say thank you. But, yeah, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
That's amazing.
Wow.
So, I would ask that you accept these gifts and donations.
I move to accept the gifts. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we can look for, to, to put everything else on hold until the summer retreat.
Yeah, well, everything else will be moved to the summer retreat. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, somebody?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. It was tough to get everybody together, so I appreciate it. We had to get the school improvement plans done.